Seven o'clock. At this time, I'd like to call the City of Bristol Council meeting to order. Let's do roll call.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Here.
Councilmember Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance stipulates that the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda up before us, looking for a motion on that agenda. Go ahead Nancy.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, looking for a second, Olga?
I'll second that.
Thank you, all members in favor, no, let's do roll call vote.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser. Hi. Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Oh, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry, my apologies.
It's okay.
And Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
And Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, next on our agenda is an appearance by Jeff Lundie, who's our Hennepin County Commissioner. He is with us via Zoom. Welcome Jeff, how are you?
Pretty good, this is the Mississippi behind me, so I, you know, if you live on the river, that's kind of view you get a look out in the back, so.
That's the same one from Saturday, and I don't believe you.
I know. Well, you've caught the fact that the sun is still down, so.
Right.
I like to think things are sunny, or, you know, anyway, I do want to, first of all, I want to thank the City Council and staff, Crystal, for allowing us to appear, and we'll try to be brief and to the point. I know visitors are appreciated, but we'd like to get your work done as a former mayor, and then move on your ways, because you've got a big agenda, so, and I do not miss trying to figure out how to fund four fire trucks, just for the record.
Oh geez, thanks, thanks.
Very happy to just let that one, let you guys have that one, so.
So since you understand so much, can you help us with some money?
I know, my checkbook's bigger now, suddenly, oh, no. So I just want to thank everybody, and most of all, we have been meeting with staff to try to get, align our team with your priorities, because your priorities are our priorities, and it's plain and simple. Our job, my team, is to serve, and so maybe what I do is, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, if I just let Vicky and Anna introduce themselves, and that way you can meet the team, because we are a team. So, Vicky, if you want to go first.
Sure, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, hi, my name is Vicky Sukasum, I am one of the aides to Commissioner Lundie, and yeah, I'm excited to serve the city of Crystal.
Back to you Jeff.
And Anna, you have a.
Oh, she's muted.
And I'm muted, I saw that happening in slow motion, hi everyone, Anna Schmiele, the other policy aide, so I'll be working more on like the business incubation, economic development side of things. I come from, you know, a business incubator in North Minneapolis, Neon, so, you know, we've been talking to like John, you know, about economic development in Crystal, so we're really excited to get started, so, thanks so much for having us.
And so I think it was important for you to meet the team, they've met everybody along the way. It's the three of us, the three of us work for you, we're for the city of Crystal, and so whatever we can do to help, whatever initiatives you have, your city priorities, then that's our priority, and so, right now, just to give a quick report is just, our focus is clearly on COVID, you know, whether it's helping people with rental assistance, helping landlords who are just as, you know, their checkbooks are just as empty as some of their tenants, or helping businesses, and so for the next few months, I think it's going to be tough. Wish I could say it was going to be anything other, but, so we're really trying to, as much as we can, to make sure that everyone in Crystal and District One, if there is aid, or packages, or programs, or grants, that we get those as quickly to yourselves and to staff, and to make sure that people can apply, because you know what, you don't get any money if you don't get that application filled out, and so one thing the county has done for people who may have connections with landlords is, we've actually made it available for landlords to apply for the tenant rental assistance, so some tenants fear, you know, applying applications, maybe they don't trust government, they, lots of reasons, and so this allows the landlords to act also, and, you know, at the end of the day, landlords and tenants need each other, so everybody likes to think there's a war between the two, but one cannot exist without the other, and so we know that they need our support. A couple other things, so I'm co-chairing the IGR Committee, so very active at the state and federal level for lobbying, I did appreciate being able to take part in your Legislative Breakfast on Saturday, and here, I've got everybody's platforms, so anything I can do to help, I certainly will do it whenever I can. I'm there to advocate for the county, but you're part of the county, so if there's things that you're trying to work on, please let me know how I can assist. And then I'm also chairing the Public Safety Committee, I think, being a former mayor, that's hard to say, being a former mayor, we very much, we're all in tune with what public safety is, and so working across the county with the suburban police chiefs, I did have a good meeting with your police chief, who is president of the Suburban Police Chiefs Association, to talk about anything that we're doing, and to be blunt and to the point, right now, everybody's planning for the trials. And so we're trying to make sure that we provide an environment where people can have their due process in court safely, we're also trying to provide a place where people can exercise their First Amendment rights to air their opinions, share their emotions, and then also, we're there to protect people's private property and safety. So we'll do that balance correctly, we've been working with all, everyone, and we'll do whatever we can to make sure that we can find that right balance. I don't have to tell you guys that the eyes of the country will be upon us. Last time, we had some excitement in the Twin Cities because of this, it kind of, after a few days, it kind of settled down, well, this time, you know, all the people around the country who like to come and show up and raise hell, they know when the dates are of the trials, they're going to be here, so we're just trying to balance all those out, and we will continue to work with the city of Crystal, make sure that your public safety needs are also at the forefront, not just Minneapolis, so. At this point, I just, I think that's it, if people had questions, I certainly, I'll do my best to answer. I'll do my best Mayor Adams to dance around things until I can find something to answer you with, so.
Yes, any questions for Jeff? Go ahead Therese.
Thank you Jim, Mr. Lundie, I had thought I read that the first trial was put off, or was scheduled for March, and was, there was a motion to move it to the summer? Is that going to happen? And what's the difference?
Yeah, as of right now, they're split, so you've got the, the primary person being charged, I've got to choose my words carefully, as of right now, that trial's still in March, and if it changes, we'll change our plans accordingly, the other three officers were moved to August, and so we will do everything that we can, we work with, you know, we're the landlords for the court, so it's our job to protect them, but at the end of the day, what they do in their courtroom is up to them, but our job is to be there, to be good hosts, provide a safe environment, so as of right now, unless something's changed, and you know, every day something happens, we still have, I think Officer Shoban would be in March, and that's what we're planning for right now.
The other three will be tried together, correct?
Yeah, in August, and that may change, I, you know, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on TV, and so, but I, we'll wait and see, and as of right now, that's how it's going. I know that the state has filed a motion to push it to June, I believe, because of COVID concerns. So we're, you know, it's not our call, we just, our job is to make sure we provide a safe environment, because it's at the county building downtown, so, so our job is to be, do everything we can to provide that respect for everyone.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anyone else? Well, no other questions that I see at the moment.
Yeah.
I want to thank you for coming in, and especially introducing us to your staff, that's, it's great to, it's great to meet them as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I just end with, we'll be reaching out to all the elect officials, just to connect, you know, I know I've read as much as I can about each one of you, and seen about your passions are, and seeing that where the county can hopefully provide support for those initiatives and things like that, so we are phone call away, and we work as a team, so it is all three of us, with the three that are here tonight, we work together, so I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, our next item is our consent agenda, fairly short list today. Approval of our minutes from work session on January 14th, 2021, and a work session and a council meeting from January 19th, 2021, and then a list of license applications submitted by our city clerk to the city council, that list is on file in her office, and that is our list. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thanks for that, I'm looking for a second, go ahead John.
So moved.
All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
And Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Next is open forum, do we have anybody here wishing to speak during open forum? Seeing no one in the chambers, anyone online wishing to speak during open forum? See no hands waving, we will skip by open forum, just a reminder to the public that this is an opportunity for anyone to speak to us.
I think Dr. Baraj might want to speak.
Dr. Baraj?
Yes.
Hi. Could you start out with giving us your address, what else is on that sheet?
Yes.
Name and address.
Name and address, that's all we.
Yes.
And then you can go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Stephanie Baraj, and I'm at 4120 Scott Avenue North, Robbinsdale, Minnesota. 55422.
All right.
And this is my time just to say thank you, Mayor Adams and the council members. I'm the interim superintendent of Robbinsdale Area Schools, and I just wanted to make sure that I stopped in, and to say hello, and to make a connection, as it is through Zoom, and just to say that we support you there, and that as we partner for the children and the students of Robbinsdale's area schools, that we are here with you as well, and so this is just my wanting to check in and hope all is well, and if there was any questions that you may have of me at any time, that we are here, and that we are partners.
Well, thank you for coming in, that's awesome that you took this time, council members, any questions there? Go ahead Nancy.
Hi, Dr. Baraj.
Hi.
I had a question for you, as far as how are things transitioning with students coming back to school?
Woo, we activated, of course, everyone was mine. We started two weeks ago with our pre-K through second grade kids. I made sure that I made my way into the buildings to see the kids and talk to families. We started Monday with our third through fifth grade, so we have really taken the approach of a rolling start. We are meeting right now to see when we can bring our middle school students back, and our high school students back, based on our numbers, so we are grateful and just happy that our elementary students are back in, and in the classrooms. We have a distance learning school, so there were many families who did not want to send their kids back to school in the physical location, and so actually, right now, our distance learning school is our largest school in our district, we have a thousand plus students in our elementary distance learning school, so we have not even, as we're starting the process to bring our secondary students back, we know that we will probably have about 600 to maybe 1,000 students that will also request to be in the distance learning school.
Okay, great, good job, thank you, it's wonderful to see the school buses out, kids out, they're really excited, and I'm sure missing their friends and their teachers, and so, good progress report, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I've also noticed a couple smiling parents.
That too.
Yes, kids are happy, parents are happy, teachers are happy, they miss the students.
I bet.
And so it is, and this is challenging, let's be honest, we know there's still a fear around COVID and the safety of families, but we took a slow, I'll say smart, start.
All right, very cool, anyone else? Brendan?
Well, Dr. Baraj, this is Councilmember Banks, I have five, four of them are now back in school at Forest, and one is waiting, I guess that's kind of, we're waiting on when does the junior highs start back, so.
Yes.
Is there any kind of a timeline yet, or?
There is, and there is, and I can share with you, so we met with our incident command team last week. We actually, because we all have to work with our regional medical team to make sure that everything is approved, and they're okay with our plan, we met with them last Friday. They sent us back to give them some additional information, which we, the principals, were working with the teachers today, and somewhat tomorrow, and then we will meet, we have an incident command team meeting tomorrow, and we will have, we'll be having a communication out to our secondary families by, probably by Thursday, Thursday or Friday, because there's one more thing we have to share with our, with the medical team to make sure they're okay with our plan, and once that's done, we'll send out a communication. We're moving in that direction to get our, our secondary kids back.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. All right, well, thank you for stopping by, and we appreciate you taking the time, so, welcome.
Nice meeting everyone, have a great day. Thank you.
We'll see you. All right, anyone else wishing to speak during open forum online, I see nobody else waving at me. We will move on.
My house was, my house was very quiet.
Which is a good thing.
My wife is very appreciative.
Yeah. All right, first on our regular agenda is the disbursements of $25,000 or greater. At this time, I will read those into the record, Golden Valley Drain Water Commission for November water costs is $148,152. LMCIT, first quarter workers' compensation insurance, that's $127,876. Logis for the monthly application support and annual system development, $62,732. West Metro Fire Rescue District for January contributions to West Metro, $110,140. Minpara, that's for the employees in the city required contributions, that's from payday 1/22/21, and that's $61,359. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $510,260.62. Any questions from council members on any of these items? Seeing nobody in-house, Therese?
Yes, I don't have a question, but I have a comment, it is really a light month for January, which is a good thing. So.
Right.
That's all I was going to say, if you're ready for a motion, I'll make the motion.
All right, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, I had moved that we approved the expenditures over $25,000 as red.
All right, thank you, looking for a second?
I'll second.
All right, thanks Nancy, let's do roll call vote.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. I know with these short ones, there are also long ones, so. I'm trying to be a pessimist, there it is. Mark Ray is here to, to address the council, he's our Public Works Director, and I think we have a trailer generator on the, on the topic, so.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, let's see if this, it did work, cool. So.
Looking for it on screen, it's like, where is he?
Yeah, it's weird, and like, sharing screens. Turns out I'm still a person. The item before you is a trailer mounted generator with light tower, it is programmed in the 2021 Fleet Maintenance Fund, it is part of our global, try to improve our resiliency, you've seen items for fiber optic communication, provide redundant coverage, we've done generators at lift stations, so this one now is a portable generator to kind of meet some other needs there, it also has a light tower, which will be used for special events such as frolics, emergency situations, and planned night work, which, to be honest, we try to never have planned night work, it's usually unplanned. Total purchase cost is just under $29,000, we did obtain two quotes for that, and there was $45,000 allocated in the budget. The memo, as you can see, kind of spelled out what this allows us to do operationally. Basically, this will help us reduce, if we had a full citywide power outage, it would reduce the number of generators we're shuttling between different locations. It would allow us to put two of our generators at fixed locations, and then shuttle this one between two other lift stations in the city, and I know one of you will nameless contribute to the lift station, this would provide backup pumping for, for sanitary sewage. So with that, are there any questions?
After that comment.
There might be two, actually.
Questions, seeing, seeing none here, how about on screen, seeing none on screen, all right, very good. Looking for a motion on this then, Nancy?
Oh, I will make a motion to adopt the following resolution, to approve the purchase of a trailer mounted generator with light tower.
All right, second, John?
So moved. Guess that's the two, right?
That's.
There we go.
He's talking about the Colorado list.
Call vote, go ahead.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, next item, we have our Recreation Director, John Elholm, here to address the council on ordinances which relate to his department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, we're here tonight to talk about some code changes for the parks and mobile food units. A lot of this came from last year, we had a very successful year, and we received more questions than I think we've ever had on, is it okay to do this, or is it okay to do that in the parks? And there really wasn't, some things were missing from our city code. What we basically landed on is the thing, the picture on the left shows a 10 by 10 tent, and some picnic tables pulled together, and we said, that's great, we want to encourage people to come out, have a picnic, set up some small tents if they need to, but when it starts getting into people bringing in these large inflatable devices, and large tents, and things like that, that we historically would require insurance for, most communities around us require insurance for, so the code just kind of cleans up what you would need a permit for, and what you don't need a permit for. So what's in the packet is some proposed changes to some definitions, most of the definitions relate to areas where a permit would be required, adds a little bit of language to what a park is, adds parking lots to that, and then some other miscellaneous things, closing hours, proposes putting Becker Park in line with all the other parks in the, in the city, just to make that a consistent closing time. Better defines where fires, and specifically charcoal grills are allowed in the parks, and then just clarifies some language related to the rules that the city manager can make that are outside of the code. The next section is really those things that we talk about, you should probably require a permit for. A couple of them are things that actually are on our rule signs already, that you're not supposed to bring glass containers into the parks and litter, but it's actually not spelled out real well in our code, so this just clarifies that language, and then identifies those things where a permit would be required, such as inflatable devices, temporary shade structures, that's larger than the 10 by 10s, commercial use, generators, and sound amplifying devices. A couple of these are already in the code somewhere else, but it just kind of brings them all together in one place. And then we also have created three levels of permits, we've already talked about, over the years, special event permits, those usually come to the council, we have park rental permits, if you want to rent an actual structure, but this creates a third category of a park use permit, which is those things that don't necessarily require renting a building for, or a shelter. And then there's some clarifying language on the mobile food units chapter as well. So with that, we recommend approving the first reading of the ordinance, amending chapter 13 and 21 of the Crystal City Code, and I'm here if there's any questions.
All right, thank you John, questions for John? Seeing none in-house, go ahead Dave, David, excuse me.
Well, not really a question, but just a comment, I just find it really entertaining that people are renting like these bounce houses, and then we had to clarify it in the code, so I just kind of thought that was pretty humorous, that people would go that far to rent something for a family event or whatever, so, kind of, kind of interesting.
Yeah, so we've, we've dealt with bounce houses before, typically, well, we require you get a special event permit if you have a group over 50, and that's usually the groups that will rent bounce houses. So we have policies on what to do if someone wants a bounce house, on the levels of insurance and such, but it's these groups less than 50, that our code doesn't say you need to get a special event permit, that, you know, we're, we're struggling with a little bit, so.
Okay. So the photographs in your presentation, that long bounce house, was that from Crystal?
Yeah, that was at Valley Place Park.
That was Valley Place.
And that was a set of bouncy houses that just appeared. So we had no idea they were coming, our staff, we have some staff out on the weekends to make sure things are running smoothly, and, and so those are the kind of things we would like to have permits for, make sure they have insurance, things like that.
Awesome, okay, any others? John, go ahead.
By any chance, are they using our electricity to operate these homes, for these bounce houses? Are they plugging in? Could, possibly?
So early on, they were, we had some outlets available, and so we turned them off.
Okay.
And then they started opening like bathroom doors, and plugging inside, and propping the doors open so their extension cord could come out, so we turned the inside outlets off as well. And then we had some that were prying the, the plastic covers off some outlet things to get their
Wow.
extension cords in, so we turned those off as well. So we've tried a number of things over the course of the summer, and, because it wasn't clear by our code that said you can't be here with that.
Okay.
So.
All right, very good, thank you.
I believe the one in the picture though, there is no power at that shelter, so I'm anticipating they had a generator.
So if they get a permit for, for a bounce house, would they have access to power, or would that still be something they would have to provide?
Depends on where it is, most likely they would need to bring a generator for that.
Okay.
I have another question, though.
Yeah, go ahead John.
I think you also talked about that you were designating areas to put these bounce houses, so that they weren't.
Correct.
Staking them down and through our irrigation system or whatever, so that's part of this too, correct?
Right, so kind of the backup to the code is the policies, and in that policy, we would have a number of places that are appropriate.
Okay.
For good places to put them.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Nancy?
So they wouldn't be able to rent that new generator with the lights that Mark is.
Oh no, it's going to be busy.
I'm sorry, Mark, I had to throw that in there.
We're going with no.
And, oh, this is just a general question, because John is here, how are things looking now that COVID is starting somewhat to lift, and things are opening up, Frolics has a date? Are there, are you seeing an increase in requests for office or park space rental?
Well, the park space rental hasn't started fast and furious yet, because we are still in early.
Any inquiries, or, I was just curious if things are.
Yeah, we've had actually inquiries for, for bounce houses already, for, for next summer.
We're not having a family fun night this spring, are we?
I don't believe so.
Probably not yet, we're not ready, yeah.
Right, but I mean, restrictions are still in place, you know, for social gatherings at the community center, it's still only two households that can get to. It's still only two households that can get together, ten people, so. But some of the sports have opened up a little bit, so we do have some, I think tonight there was volleyball leagues going on at the community center. So some things are loosening up, some things not so much.
Best to do is just call you or go to your website, right?
Right.
Okay, thanks, John.
All right. Looking for a motion on this one then? Brendan?
I make a motion to approve the ordinance revising chapters twenty-one and thirteen of the Crystal City Code regarding parks and mobile food units.
Second? John?
So moved.
All right, let's do roll call vote.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. All right, I believe our last item is in reference to the council considering rejecting bids for the police station project. So Anne is going to talk to us a little bit on that, she'll get us rolling.
Thank you, Mayor. As we talked about at the work session, the good news is we got money from the state. The good news is that we've got to meet some of the state requirements. And so that, after a lot of discussion with our architects and our construction management team, Joel Dunning and Jason Rennmester are here with both of them, we decided the best thing to do would be to recommend that the council reject all the bids so that we can meet the various state requirements and timing for submitting redesign and tweaking the plans and specifications to meet some of the requirements of the state, from the state for the project. We don't anticipate this will change the, the project itself. We'll still have the features that we want. We don't anticipate that it will increase the cost substantially. We think we will lose about six to eight weeks in the project, but the construction manager, Jason assures me that we'll be ready for the two thousand twenty-two primary. So we are recommending that you reject all the bids that were previously submitted. We are also planning to come back to you in March to ask you to approve the revised plans and specifications and to authorize going out for bids one more time. And as I said, both Joel Dunning and Jason Rennmester are on the call, so if you have questions or at the meeting, pardon me, if you have questions, they are happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Questions or comments related to this?
Well, the, you, Anne just addressed my question from the work session of the time delay. You said six to eight weeks potentially. Correct.
Okay, good. You know, I was looking at, you know, the state application to capital projects. It's a list of, of codes and stuff that we're going to have to adhere to in order to, to get that, that state money. And, you know, usually, a lot of times with grants, there's, there's always these strings attached, so we have before us a list of those. Some of them are not compulsory. We, we have some discretion, but they, they want, they want to try to gear us or make us aware of them. And one would be considering main core products, which are products that are created through the prisons, the labor of prisoners create that furniture. Couple other ones that I talked about was solar energy and state building. That one grabbed my attention because it said state building, you know, and I'm thinking, okay, is this really strings attached or are we dedicating this now as a state building because of the amount of money they're giving in the, in the, for the project? And of course, the answer is no, we're not a state building. So just, you know, some things I wanted to pass on to, to the public and it's, it doesn't seem to be too overwhelming. I know there's going to be a lot of staff time behind making the, the new bids and requirements for those specifications. And in terms of the project cost, it shouldn't cost us to go out for rebids in terms of our, our, what is it?
The construction manager.
Construction manager's perspective. So what else did we talk about in our work session that I missed? Anything? Nothing too major, so, okay. That's that, any other questions that have come up since? Seeing none, looking for a motion? Go ahead, John.
I make a motion, looking for the resolution rejecting the bids for the police station project.
All right, thank you, looking for a second? Brendan?
So moved.
All right, let's do roll call vote.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you. So on to announcements, this year is our eighth annual Bird Bash. That's something that's hosted by the Seven Dreams Foundation, and it supports Robbins, Robbinsdale Area Schools, District two eighty-one. That's going to be held on February sixth, and it goes from six thirty to seven forty-five. That will be, I believe that's going to be all virtual, so you should be able to find that online. It's on our website, do you know? Anne?
What, I'm sorry, yes, it is, I believe it is.
Okay, if not, I'm sure it's on District two eighty-one. You can also look on the Bird Bash itself, I believe they have a website as well. Also, our next work session is going to be February eleventh, and that's going to be at six thirty P M. That will be here in Chamber, here at City Hall or via Zoom. And then on February fifteenth, in Observation and President's Day, city offices will be closed. Our next council meeting will be February sixteenth at seven P M, here at the City Hall and via Zoom, both. And just a reminder that all work sessions and work council meetings are online for your listening or viewing pleasure, that's at our website, W W W crystal m n dot com. So that are the written announcements. Do we have anything else, Nancy?
No, just was going to make a motion.
Nancy, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, thank you, looking for a second, John?
So moved.
All right, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Parsons.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser. I'm so sorry, Councilmember Kaiser, I did not hear you.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. And Councilmember LaRoche.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, I hope everyone stays warm as this temperature drops a bit as we move forward this week, and we are adjourned.